Please rise for questions.
A pleasure to lead the Institute of Law of the United States of America, and to the Republic where which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, moving on. The next item is approval of the agenda. Does anyone have anything they'd like to add or alter on the agenda?
If there's, will Pat, you have something?
Well, it's not really altered. We're just gonna put our own opinion out of the bill.
Yeah, we pay bills.
Yeah, I'm just gonna add it in. Go ahead.
Okay, I would like to make a motion to approve the agenda as submitted.
Support.
Moved and supported to approve the agenda as submitted. Any discussion? Hearing none, call for a vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstaining, motion carries. The next item was approval of the minutes of the regular board meeting of June the ninth.
I make a motion and then stay approved.
I second the motion.
Moved and supported to approve the minutes. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, call for a vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, abstaining, the motion carries. The next item on the agenda is the financial report.
We began the month with $265,714.07. We took in receipts of $7,873.50, and we made disbursements in the amount of $28,081.89, leaving us with a balance in the general fund of $245,505.68.
I make a motion to approve the financial report as received.
Support.
Moved and supported to approve the financial report as received. Any discussion? Hearing none, call for a vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstaining, motion carries. Moving on, item, under correspondence, item A. I just put this in here for your information. Next week is the 4-H Youth Fair, the St. Clair County 4-H Fair, in Goodells. It is an excellent fair because it's geared primarily to the 4-H and the youth. Much more so than Armada, which also has a good fair, but they're not geared for the 4-Hs like St. Clair is. And, uh...
I'm sorry, Bill.
Go ahead.
No, is it true that they're not gonna have like no poultry because of that avian flu?
Well, the map still shows a poultry house, but I don't know if that's true or not.
Yeah, that's why I agree like a lot of...
They were lifted some places, but not always. But it wouldn't, it wouldn't be surprising if they didn't.
Yeah.
But it's a good fair, and I'm sure it's on the website. You can stop in the township, get a brochure with a map of all the facilities if you'd like. Even though I know if you'll see this before the fair, which you may.
It's kind of cool. It's like an old-fashioned fair. You know, it's not too big.
It is. It's a nice fair.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, good luck to the 4-H folks. Moving on, we have no old business, under new business. Item A is the Ira Fire Contract. The old contract expired at the end of June. Met with Mr. McCoy, the supervisor, and he kind of proposed what we're looking at. It seemed like a reasonable offer. Does put it to bed for four years. The one, kind of the overriding reason he would like the four years is he would like people, I guess he's assuming there may be new people on the board, and he would like them to have more experience when this comes up again. He doesn't, he doesn't want to do it right after an election when somebody's only been on the board a short time. So he went with the four years.
Sounds good.
And plus it gives you another year before you have to do it again.
You indicated in your notes that the, uh, it's a two and a half percent.
It's less than two and a half.
Yes.
Because inflation right now is trending down.
Well, it's been 1.6 the last two, but I have a chart in my office that shows the last 20. And the last five was still over two.
Yes.
The five before that was over two, but not much. And the 10 before that was like three.
Yeah, yeah, the 10, 10 averages higher.
So, when you go to the store, I can't see anything staying the same.
It's just that, the reason I'm raising the issue is that fuel is down like 20%, 30%.
Yes, that's true. Go ahead, go ahead.
But I don't know if that's relevant or not. I mean...
Well, it all helps.
It doesn't sound unreasonable to me, the two and a half, but, uh...
Their calls are way down, so they're not being used as much. And, uh, we're painted by the year, so it really doesn't matter how many calls they have for four years. And they do a good job. And they have, uh, I think they have a little more technology in Richmond. They have the phone, fire trucks. And I know they're working on trying to get the fire rating lowered, but I don't know how good they're gonna do on that. Depends how much money they spend. So I don't know. I thought, uh, projected Richmond contract, which goes by the number of runs, is expected to go up 2.3% for this coming year if we approve it, which we haven't negotiated because they don't give back to me. So until they negotiate it, we're not paying them. So that's good.
How much is for Ira Township? Refresh my memory, how much is a fire run on individual calls?
250 if you're a resident.
Okay.
And 350 if you're non-resident.
Is that the same as Richmond?
That's same for us.
Okay.
Every township's different. Some are 600.
Well, I didn't know if there was difference between our, uh, we had two...
We charge the same for everybody.
Right.
But we're about as low as anybody. Uh, the one township just raised theirs, two, I think, I don't see it, 1,000 or 1,200 or something.
Generally, when the residents pay debts to cover the salaries of the firefighters?
It doesn't pay the salary of it.
Well, the 250 doesn't cover our costs, but it helps offset. That's the one downside of changing first responder. But those are $50 runs. And a lot of people didn't want to pay them, and you gotta go to collections, and then they go after their credit rating for 50 bucks.
Right.
You know, and I did not see a benefit involved for the, all the hassle, runs, and the cost. So, yeah, I know, it could be less, but I thought it was reasonable because I can't tell you what the inflation's gonna be in two, three years.
Or fuel costs.
It's probably gonna go up actually, because the Fed's gonna raise interest rate eventually.
And there is language in here that...
Which is not, it's gonna happen.
You can always get out, I don't know, 60 days notice, I think, or something.
A lot of organizations from airlines to police departments are using these low fuel costs to update equipment. They have some extra cash, so they're using that.
Good idea.
So, yeah.
Well, like airlines, they're usually contracted for a year. That's why when it goes way up, they don't boost the rates immediately because they're all contracted. But, uh, the years have gone long enough now, pretty soon you're not gonna be able to say it's a dollar less than last year. Because that year's just about done. Pretty soon we're getting closer to last year's. So, I don't know. I strongly recommend approval. They do a good job for us. I think the price is reasonable. I guess you have to remember that three years ago, we paid them over $50,000 for the same service. So you can understand that, you know, they would like to get a reasonable amount of money for their service. So I would recommend approval.
So I make a motion to approve.
A second motion.
Moved and supported to approve the four-year contract with Ira Township for fire service. And, I don't know.
You should put the dates in there.
Uh, the dates, you want the dates and the numbers?
July 1, 2015, endings June 30, 2019.
I believe so. My glasses on, I'll tell you.
And that's what it is. She just said it.
Okay. So is that part of your motion?
Yes, it is.
That's part of your support?
Yeah.
You guys want the amount of dollars involved in the motion?
Well, should we do that?
I should.
Nice. So you want it for each year or just from the start to the finish?
I can see it told.
Huh?
Well, how does he have it? Does he have it broke down or does he have it?
He knows.
He knows the second page.
I read each year. Well, I'll read it off, and then you can say what you want to do. Okay, starting this year, it's $41,000 for the year. And it goes up $1,000 each of the following three years, so the last year's $44,000.
I'm gonna have to make the breakdown tomorrow.
Okay. So is that, is that part of your motion, Colleen?
It is.
That's your support also?
Yes.
Okay. Moved and supported to approve the fire contract with Ira Township with the dollars indicated. Is there any discussion in the period indicated? Is there any discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Dan?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
Me, yes. Bill?
Aye.
Yes.
Motion carries. Okay, moving on. Item B. As you remember, I think it was last month or whatever, we approved a, a policy of procedures and guidelines for credit cards. And in that policy, it said that the board must approve credit cards and lines of credit. So we just got our first Visa card, and we canceled our debit card, which the board already approved. So on item 3B is a list of all our credit cards and lines of credit. So if you would like to include it in the minutes, and you make your motion, you could put 3B.
I make a motion to approve our credit cards and lines of credit. That would include staples as a credit card, Visa, with first date, a credit card. Our line of credit would be Ace Hardware, Lumberjacks, and Cure Elder.
Okay, support. Okay, moved and supported to approve the list of credit cards and lines of credits so indicated in the motion. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, have roll call vote, please.
Okay, Colleen?
Yes.
Bill?
Aye.
Pat, yes. Joe?
Yes.
And Dan?
Yes.
Motion carries. Item C, Township Hall Survey. Under item 3C, you see that I received two prices for a survey of the property here, which is, under state laws, mandatory if you're gonna have a site plan presented. The one price is 750 and the other price is 875. I would recommend that we approve the price of $750 from David J. Little, professional surveyor.
I make a motion to approve, um, the bid submission for the Township Hall Survey from Mr. Little at, uh, you said that $750?
Yep.
Support.
Okay, moved and supported to approve the price of $750 from David J. Little, professional surveyor. Is there any discussion? I'd like a roll call vote, please.
Okay. Dan?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
Pat? Bill?
Aye.
And Colleen?
Yes.
Okay, motion carries. Moving on. Item D, Architect Drawing. In your packet was a copy of, uh, of, I believe it was the latest drawing from the architect. Uh, the folks in the office made a couple minor revisions. Uh, and I have those here that are marked up in yellow. But the, the general feeling for it as far as layout is probably gonna be the same. We may alter a few offices in size. And there's even talk of maybe moving a storage room or something. But the intent is pretty much what's on there.
I have one, only one issue.
Mm-hmm.
Um, access to the hall. I know you have to come down that one hallway into the conference room down. I would like to see that bathroom shifted over. It may cost you that storage box, but I'd like to see a straight hallway from the lobby here to the door to the hall.
And the logic behind that?
Because I think sometimes, well, uh, if there's an event in the hall, you don't want to funnel people there.
Well, they won't be. They'll be coming in from the outside, from the front door, the side door, or the back.
Yeah, I, I think the flow would be better for, um, events.
Well, actually, for election purposes, we don't let people use that.
Right.
Uh, the clerk may go back and forth.
It's not just for the election. I, I just think of, well, when you have a hallway like that, it should be something that, um...
Over.
It should be serviced the entire facility.
Well, he wants to be a little straight through without the bathroom being in the way.
That's right. Move, shift the bathroom over where the storage closet is?
And where are we gonna put, get our storage?
Well, that's, that's...
Okay.
We have to hammer that out.
Yeah. It just, that's my...
That point was brought up to the architect, but he is, when I kind of explained to him the traffic that is involved, which is pretty much a nail, except on rare occasions.
Yeah.
So, but, yeah, I'll bring it up.
Yeah, bring it up, see if you could do something with that storage closet. If, if you, um, but other than that, looks good. I like it.
I just put it on in case you had a chance to look at it, if you had any either ideas or serious problems or anything. Because, you know, the architect's willing to work at with us, but he doesn't want to be changing it 800 times for the amount of money we're paying.
Right.
So, you know, like a little...
Well, we didn't have any input on that. Right?
No, this is all his.
Well, because first he came in with, he had one before this, I believe.
Yeah, but it didn't...
But then he changed it a lot for this one. Because remember, the first one didn't have an assessor's office or anything.
And didn't have a clerk office.
Right.
Right.
That would...
They're gonna let you out?
We could've lived with that, couldn't we? Oh, you can't do that.
Mine, mine.
All right.
So that, I think roughly that's about it.
I'm puzzled about something.
Yes, sir.
Go ahead.
It looks like there's a hallway that might not be necessary.
Where?
Between the storage room and the other bathroom. If you change the entrance.
Well, if you're leaving the old bathroom, it's necessary for that. But it doesn't have to be, that hallway does not have to be handicapped hallway.
Right.
This bathroom is...
But you couldn't alter the, uh, the bathroom to accommodate the door, a different door, from a different, from the outside.
Well, since it's such a non-conforming little bitty room,
Yeah.
how much expense is it worth to?
Well, what I'm thinking is...
You could not move the door in the current bathroom anywhere. You can't even open it all the way because it hits something.
Mm-hmm.
Right.
So either leave it as is, or, you know, it was already, also discussed to get rid of that bathroom.
Yeah.
But some of the folks said they'd like to leave it because it's already there.
Well, you know, let's take another call.
I'm just kind of mashing around with Joe's suggestion of having a straight shot to, you know, to the hall.
I don't care. It's only for the bathroom. I really don't care where it is.
Well, the old bathroom doesn't matter to the hall.
But if you kind of move things around, you might be able to, well, preserve some storage as well as accomplish what Joe's suggesting.
Were we, were we trying to preserve the original plumbing so we didn't have to re-plumb everything?
No, you have to re-plumb all the new stuff. But if you left the existing, you would not have to plumb anything on that, basically.
But if you put the new stuff and the old stuff back to back, the plumbing isn't a big deal, I don't think, if they're back to back.
Well, as long as they're close.
Well, um, just take a look at this. Um, you could, uh, if you eliminate the old bathroom, you rotate the new bathroom, you could actually increase the size of the conference room. Because you could move that bathroom out closer into the hallway there. You'd have that straight shot.
Right.
Without a suggesting from the lobby into the hall.
All right, that would eliminate that.
It's by a little bit, not very much, would you?
And you may have some space for a little bit of storage here?
No, you'd actually have less storage that way than you do now, I believe.
I was a little concerned about how much storage. It doesn't seem to be enough storage. Unless you're gonna have an awful lot of file cabinets.
Well, that's what I was gonna, I was gonna suggest that maybe we need to enlarge our thing by 31 square feet to give us more storage.
Yeah, I don't think there's enough storage in the whole, the whole design.
And it's not spread out at all.
Right. It's a little, one little room at the end of the hall.
Because there's what, how many file cabinets are there in the hallway? Four or five? Unless we're gonna put them in somebody's office, you know?
Well, some of them will be dispersed offices, the general township ones, I don't know.
We, we're thinking of putting those in yours.
The minutes, the books, the...
Right in front of the door.
Right in front of the door.
The treasurer's office, I know, doesn't have an eastward facing window. Would you like one to see the sunrise?
They've got it.
Why, I'm the afternoon shift. I don't get here so often. Are you kidding? The sunrise.
They gave her the window she wanted.
I had the window. I just said I wanted to overlook the Telltale Mansion.
Okay.
And I think I do.
She's got it.
Well, I noticed there that eastward facing.
No, I don't even look out. My window's over my head at the moment, so...
Of course, you need a place to sometimes place your displays. Is there, who's paying their taxes and who's not?
What?
All right, no.
Explain to him what he wants to do.
No.
Well, he's proposed, if we got rid of that, you could turn this bathroom crossways. But then you'd have to have a five-foot hall going all the way here.
What do you mean? This way, crossway?
Yeah.
How?
But by the time you take a five-foot hall here, and then you have the five-foot six, you'd be up about here with the edge of the bathroom. So your storage would be shorter if you wanted storage. Well, that's a possibility.
All right, we gotta talk to him, see what he can do.
Okay.
Yeah, because I, yeah, I didn't like the, the flow there.
This is difficult.
Well, you gotta walk around to get there. I understand that. And I'm the one that makes that trip for anybody. Could've always. Going to the basement for something or coming up here for something, but...
The exercise does this good.
Absolutely. This is one of the things about...
From your desk every half hour doing something.
Or he thinks they should be able to see each other, get up in what's going on there.
Who, who wants to see who?
Mr. Bill.
No, what I told them was, because they've been in the same office all these years, if they had separate offices, they couldn't see or hear each other. They're gonna be in each other's office at each time.
Yeah.
Gavin.
Yeah.
They don't, my...
Me, too.
I'm gonna get a clock, like a chess clock.
Yeah, we're gonna lock you in, so you can't see nothing.
You can go in and you can press the clock.
We're gonna lock you in.
Fortunately, we have a good old happy crew.
Yes, we do, actually. We give them a hard time, but we give them...
Well, we'll go find two, and then give it to the architect again.
Usually, when I, on the weekdays when I stop in here, I always say, when I stop for a few minutes, and I end up like for an hour.
Yeah.
Because you guys...
You should come in one day, in all honesty, and sit at my desk and experience what it's like to run four departments in one desk.
I should do that, just answer the phones, I think.
Yeah, but that's not what you do.
No. No, that's not, um, and she does that, and I'll grab myself, I do the payroll and accounts payroll, and while she's running stuff over in her department, and then Bill's running his stuff over in his department.
Yeah, I like, the lobby looks good, you know, that's good. And the supervisor's office has three windows clear out.
Yeah, that should be fine.
Yeah.
Well, we're close.
Yep, it's getting there.
When we get to the final one, or even before, you'll be seeing it again.
Okay, good deal.
If it won't hold till the next meeting, I'll get it to you.
Well...
So are you gonna take Dan or Joe's suggestion and shift that bathroom?
Well, I'm gonna talk with Chris.
Okay.
If he can't make it over here, I'll, over there.
I think we're gonna get a bigger conference room. If you shift everything to the, um, to the north and rotate that bathroom, you have a...
Not much though, Joe, because you have to keep that five-foot hallway going all the way straight through.
No, I understand, but...
So by the time you turn five-foot-six bathroom crossways, now you're up to 10-foot-six. So you're gonna be down to three feet in there. So, with no storage, or skinny storage.
And then they can go spread out.
And see if, in the conference room slash lunchroom, if you have like a counter with a sink in it.
There's gonna be a counter, a sink.
Oh, yeah, okay.
Frigerator, microwave.
We got that already.
Okay.
No, we all lined that up with the architect, so he knows that.
Okay, good deal. Excellent. I think we're winning here. I think we're on a roll.
I can't be anything but good.
We'll see.
Yeah.
Okay. Anybody else have anything on that? Okay, moving on.
All right.
Item E, cemetery driveway. As I mentioned in the update, uh, I don't know when the last time is they did anything to the driveway. Uh, it's pretty much all grass right now. And under the grass is basically dirt. And it needs help. I believe that for a thousand bucks, I can get two semi-loads of either crushed concrete or asphalt and get it leveled off. And I already talked with the cemetery maintenance person, and he definitely agreed that it needs work. And, uh, so I need approval from the board. You can certainly put a cap of $1,000, 750, you're allowed.
I make a motion to approve $1,000 to be used to update our driveway and our cemetery. Support.
Okay, moved and supported to allocate up to $1,000 for driveway improvements at the cemetery. Any discussion? Do we have roll call vote, please?
Colleen?
Yes.
Bill?
Aye.
Pat?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
And Dan?
Yes.
Okay. Let me just touch base unless you want to, Patty, on the thing here, then we'll turn it over to you, or what are you gonna?
Yeah, actually, I was gonna just explain to him what I did. Okay?
All right, move me.
All right. What I did today is I had to go buy some things from Kmart for our office. So I used our new Visa card, and that's what this expense claim is. And, um, I have the receipt if you need to see it. I can tell you what I got. I got coffee and, uh, colored paper. Anyway, several items for $38.75. And our new thing says that I now have to bring it and get an okay. Well, I just did it and it will come like the middle of the month. So I'm on an okay with the bill, so when, when the bill comes through, I can go ahead and say it.
Okay.
Do you have any questions?
Can I just touch base on that a little bit?
Sure, go ahead.
Clarify, when we approved that credit card policy, it basically says the credit card bill cannot be paid without board approval of what was spent on what. And we don't know what day of the month we're gonna get our credit card bill, because it's branded. If that day of the month allows us to just do it at a regular meeting, we're fine. If it doesn't, we're gonna do it ahead of time because we never want to be late paying the credit card bill because they rip you up 40 bucks or whatever, probably. So that's why we're doing it this way this month, and we'll see what day of the month we get our bill.
Okay. I make a, a motion to approve the bills as submitted in addition to the $38,078 used on the First State Visa credit card.
It was 75 cents.
Support will be approved again.
Was that...
75 cents, not 78.
Oh, I'm sorry, something just...
I'll support that.
Okay, moved and supported to pay the bills, including the $38.75 Visa credit card bill. Any discussion?
Um, Willie Burger Earl, did he come quite a bit this past winter?
Well, yeah, but he, he ripped us for salt this year. Uh, salt went up $100 a ton. So every time he salted, it was 25 bucks. Then the last bill we got was actually for two payments, because he didn't bill us the one payment. So he billed, the cost of snow removal was the same, plus the 25 dollars a trip for the salt every time he used it. Now, I'm hoping that salt will go down again this year, and we'll be good. But the salt went from $45 a ton roughly to 160 a ton last week. And he didn't, he couldn't absorb all that, which was understandable.
Okay.
So, so let's see what happens this year.
Putting on?
But he did whack our tree. I didn't go after it for it.
Is that why it's dying?
Yeah, he hit it with a snow blade. I couldn't see it till the snow melted. But all of them are dead by morning.
Okay, that's it. Thank you.
Okay, so moved and supported?
Yes.
To approve the bills and the credit card, have a roll call vote, please.
Dan?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
Pat? Bill?
Aye.
And Colleen?
Yes.
Okay, moving on. Citizens' comments.
You all good?
All good.
All good?
You go?
Okay.
What'd you think about moving the bathroom?
What about moving the bathroom?
Yeah, and the sideboard.
Yeah, we just talked about that today. But...
But, I mean, I think it really should go over by, by bills. Get rid of that storage and stick it in there, isn't that what we talked about?
Well, but I was thinking today, you know, everybody says the storage, but our entire storage area that currently have is gone in this place. So, you need a storage?
That storage area you built, you only got one wall, did you look?
Two.
No.
This one? You wanna hear you? Well, if you open the door out instead of in, you'd have two walls.
Well, you, you've got five by, what is it, five by eight?
Something like that.
So, you, you'd have the one wall with, with filing cabinets, you gotta get in to get the filing drawer open, so.
No, I'm talking open shelf storage like we have going in the old bathroom. That's our open shelf storage right now and that's gonna be gone. We need open shelf storage for papers, pens, clips, uh, placbooks, notebooks, all that stuff. There's a lot of stuff and there's, because, you know, Brenda mentioned it might wanna do with that room. Well, I started thinking about it, well, you need a storage room someplace. Cabinets, you can allocate space cause they're self-supporting and all that good stuff. But we need storage shelves for that stuff. But don't worry, you're gonna get involved whenever we get to the next step. I want your input, this is.
I only maintain, I think you need to check out your furniture and the people in the room and kind of figure what your size should be, you know? I mean, on, on even on the offices.
Cause we were measuring today.
Were you?
Mine was not gonna.
It's not gonna work.
That is using, it's six foot long.
Are you strapped to, what, what is it, seven hundred and some feet you're putting in?
So, that ain't gonna.
Well, I hope. No, the first time you came, it was. Seven something, then he upped it, uh, I don't know, it's nine hundred, but.
Nine sixty-nine.
Nine sixty-nine, I think we should go right to the thousand.
Your south plan, you got room or what?
Huh?
Could you go a little bit bigger?
Could.
Look, if you kicked out the gable ends, how much more is it gonna cost you?
I believe. I think you should go, if there's an option to go bigger and it's not like, uh, killer, yeah, I, I would do that. I mean, this is a one-shot deal. You're not gonna be doing another one of these for a long time, I don't think.
I mean, we do need the storage.
Yeah, I think you need more space.
Okay, we'll talk.
That, that's probably one of your biggest issues too, is the storage area. Even other than what you're talking about, I didn't think about that.
Well, you need the shelf storage, then you need the.
The filing cabinets.
I think between all the offices, there's probably plenty of room for the cabinets. Whether they'll be in the room where they're used the most, I don't know. Cause there's, there's a lot of room there and, uh.
And some of them.
Not in the center. To me, like, you're building for what you have right now and what's going on right now. And that could, it's, there's not a lot of room to move out.
Right.
As things change.
And right now, we have how many houses going up?
You don't wanna have to do another survey.
Nine houses going up.
Get another architect's drawing, you know, if you can do it now, do it now. You know, if we can afford it, and it seems as though we can.
Well, you're basically pretty close to doubling the size.
Well, yeah, but the areas, and I mean, I'm not trying to complain, but the areas that you're increasing. The, the treasurer's office is gonna be twenty by what?
No, it's not twenty by.
Nineteen by point three.
Oh, the treasurer, I thought you said assessor, I'm sorry.
No.
The treasurer's office is.
Well, and that, I thought of that, is there may be enough room there, you could put a storage cabinet or something.
Yeah.
Maybe a pass-through window between the secretary and clerk's office.
Uh, well, we can switch.
They've been switched. I know the, where the assessor.
Oh, they're shifting now. They're measuring the office size.
No.
Oh, what do you mean, no?
The size of the two offices.
What did I hear? That office is bigger than mine, we're switching.
Well, she's only there one day a week.
I understand, we don't say no.
Give the whole logic behind it, we're on TV.
Yeah.
That's called human nature.
And who's gonna take the assessor?
Yeah, I'm gonna be in there.
That's southward facing, you get sunlight, that'll be good.
Are, are you planning for filing cabinets every, every office?
I'll be able to lay and get the sun.
You know?
That's gonna be a big issue with you, you know, when you try to fit the desk and all the other stuff.
I understand. You know, I guess I'll have to look closer at the ones we have and see if they could be allocated, like, the ones for the building department, obviously you should go with the building department. The ones for taxes and treasurer should obviously go in their office. There's a couple that are basically township stuff, like the minutes books and stuff, they throw them in mine.
Right.
So, I don't have a problem with that. What I'd like to do is I'd like to find, if anybody is out there, give me a really good deal on some fireproof cabinets, let me know. Cause I would really like to get some. But the price went ballistic.
Yeah, and we don't want, we want them in pretty good shape.
Well, we've got.
Right, Bill?
Yeah, we do. I don't know, we've got like five fireproof or fire resistant ones, but it'd be nice if we had about four more.
Can you put stuff on disc or pattern? Some of the stuff, it's pretty impossible, eh?
Well, the county, I was in a meeting with the county clerk and they wanna do it for you. They estimated a big box would cost about six hundred dollars.
And count our boxes downstairs.
So.
They what?
And count our boxes downstairs.
Oh, I see.
Small fortune.
Yeah.
So, it's very, at this point in time, it's very expensive.
Six hundred dollars, a box?
Yeah.
A box.
Yes, so, for our budget, it would be a large fortune.
Cause it's, it's large man hours to do that.
And then you have to retrieve them and after that too, you know?
So.
Well, eventually be online, but. But right now, we can't afford that.
I didn't know how that worked, I mean, I love them.
Yeah, they wanna do it, they offer their service up there, but right now it's costly and effective. Okay, anybody else have anything? Uh, I learned today that our federal money, after all this time, was finally approved for the bridge. So, it looks like they're gonna wait and bid it out in November and do it next year.
And which bridge is this again?
That is on Hessam near Twenty-Six Mile. Was supposed to be done this year, but the federal government ran out of money like they always do. So, you can't bid it out till they reallocate some, but they got some. So, then we bidding it out in November and be done next year. So, that's good. Uh, nothing else, anybody else have any? I guess we're up to adjournment.
Motion to adjourn, support.
Moved and supported to adjourn, all is in favor? Aye. Aye. Stand adjourned. All right.